Good evening. I'd like to call. Planning Board meeting of February 16th to order. The first thing on the agenda is minutes from February 2nd. Mr. Secretary, do you have any minutes?
I recommend approval of minutes for February 2nd, 2016.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Next item on the agenda is approval not required plans. Let's see, with applicant Henry and Linda Stanwinski to reconfigure two lots.
Stankiewicz.
Stankiewicz, sorry. Two properties by exchanging parcels of equal area located at 161 Lake Shore Drive and 4 Sandy Lane drawn by Holmes &amp; McGrath. Does everybody have the plan in front of them? Is anybody here? Oh, you're here, sorry, for the applicant.
Evening, I represent the applicants, the Stankiewitzes. And they own two lots in Lake Shore Drive and Pinecrest Beach. Each of the lots has a house on it. Houses are many years old. The houses are really mislocated on the lot. This plan just adjusts the lot line, there will be exchange of equal areas of land so as to correct the error with regard to the, one of the lots, they only own two of the lots. The building commissioner has given me a letter confirming his opinion that these lots, when they're adjusted, don't create a new zoning violation and that we're improving the situation because the house on Lake Shore Drive will now conform to zoning setbacks, whereas it does not at this time. Anyway, the plan does not show a subdivision, so it should be endorsed, approval not required.
Yes, Doug? This one's a little funny because the other lot line, I know it's not your job probably to do that one, but the other house encroaches on the next lot over.
Yes, that's correct.
But we're not addressing that now, just.
No, we're not. I mean, from a zoning point of view, that's no different than if it was simply nonconforming us to the setback. In terms of ownership, arguably, since that house has been there for 50 more years, arguably, they do own that area by adverse possession. But it's irrelevant to the issue of whether there's a subdivision or not shown on the plan. If it would be helpful, I could give to the board, although I don't think it should be necessary, a copy of the letter signed by the building commissioner about what we're doing.
No, thank you, just a point of curiosity, really. Thank you.
Pretty straightforward.
Yep. I move that we endorse it unless there's anybody else.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All set? Thank you very much. The next is a.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Does it make any sense to take the mayor's lane name change out of order so those people could leave?
Is there someone here for that? Okay.
In disregard.
Okay. Planning Board discussion applicant Cadet Enterprises site plan review to construct one structure comprised of a Class IV restaurant with drive-through window Dunkin' Donuts shop, 2,278 square feet of additional space for three different retail office uses, 3,161 square feet located at 0 and 1184 Sandwich Road, BSS Design for the applicant.
Yes, okay. Notice?
Yes. No, notices, okay, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, the notice of the public hearing, meeting, excuse me, was issued on February 5th, 2016.
Thank you.
Thank you. For the applicant, Tom Bunker of BSS Design. Also have here Robert Amen, who's representing Cadet Enterprises, Erica Scander, who is a franchisee of Dunkin' Donuts, Jennifer Conley of Conley Associates Traffic Consultant, and Andrew Gerrelly, landscape architect, who worked on developing the site plan also. This site is currently two lots. It's known as 194, or 1184 Sandwich Road is now lot 194 and 193 surrounded by these heavy lines right here. So at the corner, as you can see, of Sandwich Road and Route 151, it's owned generally this This reddish area is B2 zoning district. The blue frontage, 100 feet wide, public use district. There is a power line easement that runs along the frontage of the road, a 90-foot wide easement taking up here. There is also a shared driveway which comes in from Route 151 along, within the power line in the public use district, and then back out to Sandwich Road. This is within a shared driver, a common driveway easement for the use of whatever businesses are on these lots. As you can see, as you're familiar with the site, there's a gas station and convenience store in this location. Currently has a drive-through, which is the current location of the Dunkin' Donuts here. If and when the permits are approved, these lots will be combined into one. Total area is 3.12 acres, upland of 2.83 acres total. You can see also there's a house down in this location and another house up here. The green is agricultural A zoning district, and Little Jenkins Pond is in this location So is proposing to build a Dunkin' Donuts, should be in this unit here, the Dunkin' Donuts with an entry, and then three other leasable units in these locations, these The building is 5,485 square feet, this right here, which will house the Dunkin' Donuts in the three spaces. We've developed a clockwise circulation, or a counterclockwise circulation on the site one way, so they come in only at this location. 27 parking spaces mainly for customers in this location here, and one way in, one way out, and then back out to Sandwich Road, or they could continue, go up to the gas station if they need to. There's also then driving around back here, the drive-through lane, stacking back to here, but it widens out. So there's two lanes wide through this location for an escape or bypass lane down here, widens out even further. This location, there are three parallel parking spaces. This where we found in cases, of course, that truckers want to come in sometimes and they can't pull into the normal spaces, they will be able to pull around here and parallel park and walk across and in, get their coffee, and then go back out. The order station is in this location, and they pull forward. The pickup window is right here. We have in there two dumpsters for the four businesses in here, two dumpsters. There's also three parking spaces here, which would be for employee, most likely employee parking here, and a loading zone, 14 feet by 45 foot loading zone for use by any of the businesses. Their truck can pull in here and then just pull out through the, you know, get through the drive-through lane and then exit this way. This area right here, the fire lane, you should have a referral in there, or there was a question from the fire department if their, the largest ladder truck could fit through, not around the back, which it could do as done, but through the front. And so we widened the entrance and widened the exit to be able to pull in, has to make a little bit of a maneuver, have last week, you know, returned this to, to the lieutenant. Have to pull in back and come up to here, establish himself in front of the building, and to get out, this fire lane is on to pull in, back up a little bit so they can get out that way. He has not responded yet to me with the new layout, but when I talked to him on the phone, he didn't seem that would be a problem with some maneuvering like that to get in and There is on the staff report a question of topography. We do have a retaining wall with a guardrail along the top in this location. If you've been out there, much of this site was cleared and leveled 10, 15 more years ago, and it was left with a bit of a slope through this area. This retaining wall at its lowest point, I should say where the ground is lowest, right through here, is 12 or 13 feet tall, but then, of course, it comes up to grade at the two ends. So that retaining wall will be built in there before any other site improvements are made. And this wall is the highest point, basically, this, the top of this wall is at the elevation of the ground up at this location, so everything within the site is lower than the top of this wall, so all storm water will be held on the site. There is a concern of conservation to make sure water doesn't flow over and into there. There's a drainage basin in this location, drainage basin here, a bio swale. All the water from the front, this half of the lot and back up to this point will flow, there are no catch basins in here, it'll flow into this vegetated swale here. The rear area will flow into a vegetated swale in this location. The exit lane and some of this parking will flow into a drainage swale in this location. It's not clearly shown, but it's on the set of plans that we gave you on the drainage, creating a drainage plan in here. So that was designed to, in the small events, take care of the so-called first flush of rain, the smaller vents will go in there, the sediment and nitrates will be deposited within the swale, and then on the larger, the 25-year storm, that swale may fill up and over top and go into the leaching pits, which then will, by then, the sediment will have settled out and the, be relatively clean water, that will go into the leaching pits. Each drainage swale has two leaching pits for the storm water. The lot coverage is 4.44% by the building, if you're counting the roof area, it's lot coverage of 6%. The paving, parking, and building is 32%. This is over the 15% allowed, except by special permit, we can go over the 15%. We have the drainage swales and not the typical catch basin type of drainage system. The septic system is out front here, we have a grease trap for the kitchen flow in this location, a septic tank here, and then it goes to a leaching facility. The flow from all of this, these four businesses, is on the worst-case flow, since you don't know if this should be retail or office space, but the worst-case flow is about, I think it was 740 gallons a day, which is equivalent to less than two four-bedroom houses on this site. The nitrate loading calculations show that from this site, with this maximum expected amount of septic flow, 4.6 parts per million, which is less than the five parts per million, which is the Cape Cod Commission threshold for nitrate concentration. How have Andrew described the planting plan?
Andrew Gerrelly, registered landscape architect. And as Tom mentioned, we do have the, I'll start with the drainage areas, and unfortunately, it's not showing up very well from here, I'm just trying to grab this for a second so I can read a little bit better. The drainage areas, as Tom mentioned, are in this area, this area, and this area. Those are seeded with a conservation mix for rain gardens, and they're also planted mostly with red twig dogwood, which does very well in dry conditions and flooded conditions, so that it will be a good intake of the nutrients that may build up from the runoff. There's 22 trees on the site, proposed trees, including the red oaks, northern red oak, which is mostly here in the front. There's some tupelo trees in this swale area, which also are very good around the water. There's River Beach, Clump River Beach, Birch, rather, along the back. These are all native trees, and also red maples in, around this swale area, also good around the water. Another tree right there. And then in the front, there's mixtures of ornamental plants, so we're going to have some good summer color, a little bit of evergreen as well. There's a nice seeding area out in front here. I was fortunate enough to have worked on the East Falmouth Dunkin' Donuts that was done several years ago, and they brought me in mostly because they felt like they did a pretty good job with the outside seeding area, and so we worked some of that into this area as well, and some, a little bit of screening as well, so that as you come around the drive-through, you're not just looking at like an industrial area. So little, small lawn area back here for the enjoyment of the employees taking breaks back here for those businesses, and also a wildflower mix of seed that will go in here, so it makes a nice meadow and a mix of native perennials and annuals. And I think I can take questions if you have them.
Questions, anybody? Yes, Paul?
Mr. Bunker, I noticed on the site plan, there's several monitoring wells, at least three, that seem to be covered with the building or with paving. Can you talk about that, please?
The monitoring wells? I believe, I actually don't know much about them, except I think they're put in there as part of their, just due diligence, 21E, to make sure that there was no pollution, as far as I know. Is that correct, Paul?
Is that from the service station or from the?
The buyer, well, the buyer, just as part of their due diligence, just put, had the wells put in to make sure it was a clean site before he got into a purchase and sale agreement.
So there's no need to continue with the monitoring wells, is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
The other question I had on the, this is shown in the design criteria, it's a fast food restaurant. Is the product going to be prepared at this restaurant, or they're just going to be serving it like a lot of other Red Donut areas? Design criteria shows only 25 seats.
Correct.
And then you base it on office space, so you're below the thousand minimum criteria. If that concept changes, does that impact the septic system? If you start producing a kitchen in there rather than just.
Well, there is, for the grease trap, there is a kitchen flow. They now make, I think, sandwiches and things like that, so there is a kitchen flow, you know, a fast food kitchen flow, I think it's 15 gallons per day per seat, and the, that's for sizing the grease trap. And then the regular sanitary flow is 20 gallons per day for 25 seats. The only way it would change is if the number of seats were to change, but I don't see that happening. If that's enough, that answers your question. Or you want to know if they're going to make the food, or?
No, if the concept changes, it may affect the flow too. But you seem to be below that, so it doesn't appear to be an issue at this time.
No, we're below that, we're below the 1,000 gallon minimum, even including the other businesses. I don't, I don't expect any, I mean, if we get permitted for this, it's not going to change.
Thank you.
I have a question. So on the drive-through, I know you have a drive-through in the building next door, isn't there a prohibition from having two drive-throughs next to each other?
No, that's not quite right. The prohibition is against having a curb cut for a drive-through within 300 feet of another, of a curb cut for another drive-through. In this case, actually, the distance between the two curb cuts far exceeds 300 feet. I think the situation might be similar, although perhaps better, than the CVS and the bank approved David Straits recently, but this plan with curb cuts more than 300 feet apart is entirely compliant.
Thank you.
I have a question. Could you go over, you talked about the lot coverage ratio, go with the zoning and the parking and lot coverage ratio and the parking requirement and what you have here?
Can you talk about the number of parking spaces required?
Well, first, lot coverage, I wasn't familiar with the number that you said to me, I would just, what is the zoning on this property?
The zoning for the property is B2, except for the public use along the street, and this section of the lot is agricultural, but helps to actually create a buffer to the residents to the south.
Mr. Bunker referred to a 15% lot coverage ratio, I was unfamiliar with it, I thought it was a lot higher.
Well, that's because there is one spot where that comes into play. The lot coverage for, in the B2 district, by structures allowed by right is 40%, we're at 4.4 or a little more, and 70%.
He said 15, that answers my question, I'm all.
Well, it is significant because we're in a water resource protection district, and in order to have more than 15% lot coverage in a water resource protection district.
If the water resource overlay district is what's doing.
So we're going to the, that's part of our request to the Board of Appeals for a special permit under the provision that allows them to approve more than 15% lot coverage. And the main criteria there is that we show that the storm water is handled appropriately as is done on this plan, using the natural, naturally vegetated swales as opposed to discharge directly into the, into the ground. That's what that's all about. We also need a special permit simply because it's a Class IV fast food restaurant.
How about parking requirements?
The parking requirement for a fast food restaurant is one space per seat with a minimum of 10. When you think about that, that's a very odd arrangement because the drive-through, of course, takes a sit-down customers away from needing seats, and without the drive-through, it would be one space for every two seats. So if there were 25 seats as is proposed, that would be 25 parking spaces, plus the parking that's required for the other commercial space, and on our plan, we've shown it calculated both for office space at one per 200 square feet, or, sorry, office space one per 250 square feet, or if it's retail, one per 200. So the parking requirements, if you add it all together, come up to 37 or something like that, and we're not showing that many parking spaces. We think that we have much more parking than is required as is, or at least more parking than is required, and that's based on the different peak hours. And that's based on the different peak hours of operations. So the peak hour for the Dunkin' Donuts is before nine in the morning. About, a very high percentage of the traffic is, is those morning hours. Whereas the peak time for the other uses is actually in the afternoon. So we meet that criteria whereby the Board of Appeals can grant a special permit based on different peak times. Jennifer Connelly, in her traffic report, analyzed not only the traffic on the streets, but also the layout of the site and the sufficiency of parking. And went to her sources and felt that there was more parking than is needed, as shown for all of the proposed uses. And there's some figures about that in her report and sources. So we are seeking a parking reduction from the Board of Appeals. In order to do this plan, we need that special permit. We think we have a real good case for it.
Paul?
I have a question, Ms. Connelly. If I understood Mr. Bunker correctly, emergency vehicles are not going to be able to go behind the building. They stay in front of the building. And you have a turnaround there. It's pretty tight, but you put in a fire lane. Is that going to be adequate for emergency vehicles to get through that?
I think you might have misunderstood. You might not have said it clearly enough. The fire department wants to make sure they could go behind the building as well as in front of the building. And based on this plan, they'll be able to do that.
Thank you.
So obviously, that's the best condition.
I thought you said they're not going to go back there. Thank you.
Yes, Ken?
I had a quick question, maybe Mr. Bunker could answer it. On the retaining wall, you said that's like a 13-foot retaining wall? Is that...
Yes, at its highest point.
Is that going to be sloped on the other side? Because I understood you said with a guardrail. How high would the guardrail be on that? Is that normal traffic guardrail height?
Just the normal traffic height.
On, on the design of the retaining wall, would it be a total drop, or would it be sloped down?
It's, it's on the detail page. It's, it's made out of the big blocks, and it just drops right off. I mean, if we felt we could put a, you know, a 44 chain link fence along there also. Typically, I think the guardrail is probably enough to, people shouldn't be walking along there.
Curiosity just came up on the fact that donut shops, children come around. Just curious as to make sure nobody drops 17 feet.
Yeah, it's considered, and certainly, if there was felt to be any danger, we could put a chain link fence along there also.
Yes, Paul?
Tom, could you just go back over the fire department's entry and exit? It just seemed a little convoluted when you said it the first time.
Yeah, well, there's one thing I did. He didn't, he didn't care about going around the back.
Right.
They can go. This had to be widened out, and this is for the largest ladder truck. It just depends on which one comes in there. It would have to make the, it can't make a U-turn.
Okay.
Like this. So I said it would have to come in, up to here, and then back up to there, and then come in. And the same thing for leaving. It would come down and just pull forward. And of course, when you're leaving, it probably have lots of time, and they can make this, go in here, back up, and go out. But, but of course, if, you know, if, if the North Falmouth Station were responding, it could easily come in off a 151 and then just, you know, psh, pull right in easily. Or if Mashpee were responding, you know, it could come in, too. It's just if it's coming in off a Sandwich Road with the largest ladder truck, then it would have to make a, you know, like a two-point, three-point turn, or whatever it might be called.
And the lane between the parking spaces, it looks like it's about 20, 22 feet?
It's 20. This is an 18-foot space, 24 feet, and another 18. It's 60 feet curve to curve.
Yes?
One final question, Mr. Gerrelly. You've mentioned Dunkin' Donuts East Falmouth. I assume you worked on that project?
Yes.
That has a very nice low retaining wall there. And in fact, the developer of CBS on that corner, Davisville Corner, is going to continue that concept all along. Are you doing anything like that in this area?
We haven't proposed anything like that at this point. I think we're a little bit limited because of the easement for the, the power lines, and also the zoning. I'm not sure about the zoning out there, but I think the power lines. And there's, there's an easement for the use of the roadway. And some of it's paved and some of it isn't. But they still have the easement on the other property, so we can't really impede them with, with the wall if they chose to use more of the, the access easement.
It's a nice concept.
Thank you.
Well, this is just the discussion tonight, so are we waiting for changes?
We'll see this again on March the 1st. I'll be with fire deputy and town engineer. We got town engineer's revised referral today. So I'll go over the design solutions with the design team, and we'll see you again on March the 1st.
Thank you. Next item is Maya Lane, name change request. We have a quick, yeah, we have a request from Steve Hadad. He's writing to request a vote of the planning board to consider the name change for his property located in Hatchville. Currently, the property is known as Maya's Lane, and they would like to change the, the name to Little Farm Lane. No lots have been deeded out at this time. I have enclosed a copy of the quitclaim deed. Brian, is this a subdivision? We've already done what?
This is a small three-lot subdivision up in Hatchville. Because none of the lots were conveyed out. It's a fairly simple administrative change. It'd be a vote of board to approve it for the name of the road. Right now, the mile are, that's recorded, the registry of deeds, has a name, Maya's Lane on it. So your vote, if you choose to change that name, would then get recorded with that plan, noting the name change. It's a little three-lot subdivision. Maybe Pat was on the board trying to do Ralph.
Lights, please, lights.
Lights, lights back on? We have to get used to this new system here. Ralph, we're going to keep you hopping.
Good job.
How's that?
Very good.
Unlike other pre-roads that have lots that have been deeded out, you would have to hold a hearing. All that notice has to go out. But this is a simple administrative...
Mr. Hadad owns them all.
He has given us a quitclaim deed, indicating that he does, and we will verify that. We have, we've already done that. We have checked with the fire department. I haven't got it back in writing yet, but I do have a verbal on the phone from the deputy that the name change is fine with them. We try not to have names that sound...
So this is for our information. You can deal with this administratively.
No, I would need a vote.
Oh, we do need a vote?
I'd like to make a motion that we make, make a vote to change the assessment Mr. Hadad requested, if everything is, is in order, as Brian's mentioning to us.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Anyone from the public? General correspondence. One more thing? I missed something? Oh, removal of Coastal Pond Overlay District for Maravista Phase 1. And I'm assuming this is now because it's all sewed, is that...
I just want to introduce the subject of the board's...
It's coming our way.
Coming your way. Now that the sewer system is being constructed, and we anticipate that construction to be complete here within a year or so, the necessity for the Coastal Pond Overlay District in this area will evaporate. So I just wanted to get the board's mindset, thinking about this, what areas are going to, should come out. And if we do get projects in the vicinity of Phase 2, that's coming down the road, what should be the board's policy with regards to high-quality areas that typically you require a denitrification? So I just want to put this essentially on your radar a little bit. We may move forward towards the November town meeting, maybe with a report, maybe even with the change. I just wanted to alert the board to this, because, you know, it's heading towards March, March upon May. Sounds like a long time away, but end of August is usually when your articles are done.
When you refer to it as Maravista Phase 1, is that really the Little Pond Service Area Phase 1? Is that the proper name?
Little Pond.
Yeah.
So we would have to map it, essentially bring a map change.
On the GIS, they have that Little Pond Overlay District on the map. It's already there, right?
Correct. And what we would do, we would essentially...
Click the layer away?
Click it away.
Yeah, okay.
And take that out of the Coastal Pond.
Right.
Calculate the lot, and put it back in place. It'd be an exercise, a mapping exercise by the board. Wouldn't be any changes to the regulations, it would just be, they are no longer in that overlay district by a map change. Very much like we did with the water resource districts in Fresh Pond. We adopted the DEP Zone 2s. We really ought to be revisiting that, too, but I realize there's a lot going on.
This would have, this would have an impact on our future bylaws if we were to forward, pass forward the accessory apartment. It would have an impact on that, because if they are in an overlay district, they would be required to have denitrification systems, and they won't have it, they'll be on the sewer.
They'll be on the sewer, so they'll be compliant with that new accessory...
New, new district. So that's an example of how it'll impact us.
So I will be bringing those forward probably after town meeting, which is about a month or so away. We'll start introducing this to the board, perhaps throw some action at the next town meeting. It just depends on the construction schedule. It's either going to be the November town meeting or a year from now. But Tempest Fugit, and the topic came up today, actually came up a while ago, so I just thought I'd get that mindset and get this on the board's radar. Just a real short, quick and dirty treatise tonight.
I have a question about that. Does the Coastal Pond Overlay District have any other implication other than for sewer-ing? Does it have any verbiage about stormwater management or anything else?
It has a little bit in there about, in stabilization areas, you could use, you know, some best management practices for nitrogen retention in these bio swales.
Right.
But most of the stormwater management is either in your water resource districts, or you do have a standalone water management, first flush, first capture, two and a half inches of rainfall, in your subdivision regulations. Coastal Pond Overlay District really speaks to nitrogen. It's coming out of the...
Right. Paul had something, too?
Yes, Paul?
It'd be nice to know how many properties were required to put in a nitrogen removal system that would be affected by this.
None, because they're all going to be on the sewer. That's the whole point.
Prior to this time, were any that were required to have a nitrogen removal system. Because once the sewer's there, you're going to have to connect to the sewer system. It would vacate that nitrogen removal system.
Okay.
I don't know if there are any, but it'd be nice to know if there are any that would be affected that way.
There are.
And what's, I think they have a year to connect after the sewer system's completed, or time period anyway.
Right.
Something like that. I don't remember the date. But they have a year to tie in, they'd have to dismantle and remove their nitrogen removal system. So that could be expensive.
Which is why I think the board maybe want to think about, you know, commanding these systems in, say, the Phase 2 area. If in fact, in the next few years, they'll be coming to a sewer, then I'll have to take out a $25,000 system.
Well, I believe they're kind of letting them slide right now in those areas.
We, and this board has done that in these areas, instead of denitrification, you say if in fact the sewer doesn't go by in five years from now, then, or upon, you know, you change to the title file that will require you to upgrade, then you would install. Recognizing that they're very expensive and that the sewer seems to be chugging down the road in the pond. But we'll have that for you over the next month or two or three. So this is going to surprise, either the upcoming November, or next November, this November, or the upcoming April 2017.
Before we know it, wow.
Yeah. So that's all I have for that for tonight, but we'll be, we'll be moving on that for the next meeting.
Moving on to general correspondence. You all, I saw most of you commented on this letter. It's been sent out. I saw some of you made edits to it. This is an open letter from us, from the planning board to the community regarding our advisor, our accessory apartment bylaw, and that we'll be bringing that to the town. I have sent this to the enterprise. They are not going to publish it, but they said they would interview me on it. They, they said they don't publish open letters to the community, was their response. But Bri...
Unless you pay for it.
Yeah, they were looking for an ad. Brian has sent it out to numerous lawyers and different groups. And I, today, when I got the letter from him, I decided, okay, well, I don't know what, I don't have that many followers. I think I tweeted it out to the 10 people that follow me and a few others. So we're, I would encourage everybody to...
They're all your family.
Yeah, my mother, my mother's brother, sister, yeah. They got it all. And, and there's also an attachment to it. It's the, the actual draft. And I recommended to the people I sent it to, that every time they go for it, they go back to our website on the town, because any updates that we do will be posted there, so they can always get the current. So we shouldn't have to keep sending every time we update it out to everybody. We're just putting on notice. When you want to see the most recent one, come to our website and download it from there. Then we have a letter of support. Well, it's actually to the zoning board, and we're just copied on it. And this is, well, this is Doug, this is the selectman approving McGansett Crossing, this letter here? Yeah, that's what it is. This is a letter from Doug Jones, chairman.
I don't have a copy.
And he's, she, he's sending a letter of support to the ZBA. And we're just, we're just copied on it for what we approved a couple meetings ago, McGansett Crossing. That's it for correspondence. And next item on the agenda is future agenda items. Yes?
I think I would like to do a committee report from the local comprehensive plan subcommittee to report on the recent workshop or presentation we had from Mr. Rooney of the Cape Cod Commission regarding Form Based Code. So I'd like to see...
Put that on next...
Put that on the agenda, so we can give a report to the board.
Our next meeting, Brian, we're talking March 1st and 8th, right?
February 23rd is the next one.
We'll be up for that. I'll talk to the board about your upcoming schedule.
I've had a conversation with them.
They've been asking for some changes on the 23rd. The committee report's on the 1st, I think.
Yep. That's the request. Anything else? So any committees?
Are we meeting on the 23rd or not?
I don't, well, we're going, we're not to that part yet, but that's our next agenda item to discuss.
I've been saying coastal resiliency for a future agenda item for a long time now.
Watch for good news.
Okay. I keep driving by the beach and there's not much left.
Okay, now we'll discuss the next meetings.
On the boards of agenda night, I indicated that for February 23rd would be your next meeting. I'd like to ask the board to postpone that a little bit, so I have a little bit of time to meet with the designers for this project here, and some other information. So I'd ask the board to put the next meeting off on March the 1st, where we will pick this project up together with some of the other things that are coming in. So I'm looking at March 1st and March 8th, because there is a zoning article on the annual town meeting. town meeting about signs and getting rid of some definitions of the zoning bylaw that are no longer used and haven't been used in 20 years. So we will be meeting, we'll have those hearings on the 8th. Also, the selectmen voted at their meeting last week to propose a joint meeting date with the planning board of Saturday, March 12th. And I indicated, or they have indicated they would like to talk about...
Coastal resiliency?
Yes, coastal resiliency. I mentioned that to them today. Together with some other timely topics. But we did, I did mention coastal resiliency. It's on the minds of a lot of board members, especially Doug and others. Together with the update of the Main Street project, the McMahon study, and things that I know Paul hasn't asked me about. We're looking at a joint meeting on Saturday, March 12th to address those two items. If there are other items on the agenda, the board members can think about, give me a quick email. And I'll meet with Mr. Suso and we can form a point. If they're not available on Saturday, on March 12th, let's know too. You need to obviously inform, if you really want to be there, especially these topics of interest, you can look at another table.
Yes, Pat?
Should we take that opportunity to have the selectmen give some comments on the accessory apartments?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
And I think we should trot out for a little bit of discussion, both the multifamily zone, just to get them thinking about it, and the conversion bylaw. Talk about it a little bit.
Talk about, yeah, these are the initiatives.
Right, that they're, that it's coming. We want to talk, I, we should always talk about those three things together. First, first the accessory, and then the other two are follow-ups.
The umbrella is housing.
Yeah, the whole thing is under housing, but those are the three prongs that the consultant identified as low-hanging fruit.
So housing, resiliency, and transportation.
Yeah.
Other major things, and McMahon, Europe zoning initiatives, and some coastal issues. Paul has a problem.
I feel like we should have at least one meeting with ourselves about coastal resiliency, at least discuss it. We haven't really done anything.
Well, you can put it on the agenda so you can refresh what was voted at town meeting. I think the April or November 2014, 15? So sure, I'll, you can put that on the agenda for us to bring up the speed as to where the town is as part of the local comprehensive plan, the votes at town meeting, and bring those forward. Some projects are going, are probably going to be coming up, or anybody want to talk about?
Maybe have a refresher on the 1st and then chance to do a little homework before we meet with the selectmen.
Sure.
Sounds like a good idea.
Thank you.
Yes, Paul?
If we're going to be talking about Matrix Street Traffic Study, it'd be nice to find out the status of the Cape Cod Commission study along Main Street. Everyone knows we're getting information about development along Main Street. That's a tremendous interest in the community. So it'd be nice to get a status report on the Cape Cod Commission report. And that seems to be a companion to the traffic study.
I, that's fine. We can give you an update.
I'm going to write it down.
I got it right now. Cape Cod Commission report? I write these things down, I put them in the computer and they go resurfaced out to work. I got it. That Paul has it, you have your...
We all have our own agenda.
You know, I get all these little topics next time and then we try to find an opportunity to bring them all together.
They haven't started that study. Didn't they just reach an agreement on the scope of work for that?
It was supposed to have gone back in bed. There have been some staff turnovers. One of these staff members lost her husband, so she took us about it. So I have met with some of the commission staff to revigorate that and get it going. I'm hopeful that they will at least start up here soon. But they are obviously waiting for reasons. But they, I did meet with Heather McKelroy, can your staff? And they have developed a timeframe. The staff people will work on it. I know it's with the manager's office or city.
And that completes the agenda I have. Anybody else? Yes, Paul?
Make a motion, will you, John?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good job. Under an hour.